W C D A contingency funds to pay the City of Goldsboro's W C D A dues as a result of a 2017 building agreement, and that's for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, for the city?
So had you explained that, how that come about?
Yeah.
Great folks here.
Better you explain it than me.
It took them a day to figure this one out. So in 2017, Wayne County Development Alliance, Wayne County Government, and City of Goldsboro all signed an agreement to build the Lot Eight Shell Building, which is the one that got sold to Hosakawa. Within the agreement, it specified that the City of Goldsboro would contribute one, uh, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One hundred and twenty-five thousand of that to be designated as their Impact Wayne contribution. So City of Goldsboro has been a long time, every time we've had a Capitol campaign, the City of Goldsboro has given money to W C D A private funding as a Impact Wayne campaign donation.
So they actually didn't give the three hundred thousand dollars investment?
So there was three hundred thousand of that was directly to the county. You all got three hundred thousand dollars to build the Shell Building. So, so of that Shell Building construction cost, you all have three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars after you sold then would just stay inside of a fund that you all are using to actually help build one of the new Shell Buildings out there.
So how much was that building, how much that building cost?
Uh, that I do not know. I was not, I was not involved in the construction of that particular building. I do know the sale price of it was two hu- uh, two million dollars. I do not what, know what the total construction cost was.
Do you remember what it was, round figures?
Around two million.
About two million dollars.
Oh, really? Okay.
But, um.
So we had one point seven million, and then they had three hundred thousand. That's about fifty-fifty split, ain't it? Oh, go ahead.
Uh, so, so the City of Goldsboro paid one twenty-five thousand, what it was is twenty-five thousand dollars per year for five years is what their, um, commitment was in the Impact Wayne contribution. They paid one twenty-five thousand dollar sum to W C D A directly.
They paid one of the twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, yes, not one hundred and twenty-five. They paid twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, for quite some time, there was some contention between the City of Goldsboro and W C D A in the fact of trying to figure out where this hundred thousand dollars were because they were continuing to get an annual can- uh, campaign, um, contribution invoice. And the funding had not been paid, and they kept going back. The previous city manager said, we've already paid it, we've already paid it, we've already paid it. Uh, when I became the president, I just really just dug through the finances, tried to figure this out, and what came to light was that the money was given direct, directly to this county versus giving that to W C D A because the agreement said that a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that would be the Impact Wayne. They were, and the agreement was written in essence that it would go over to the county, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand of it being recognized as W C D A.
So what years is that?
Uh, that was the previous Capitol campaign. Um, that.
So.
So, so that was, that was 2017, but that started, um, and I would have to go back and look at it, to be honest with you. I don't want, I don't want to tell you something improper.
So we're not still paying their dues, right?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, they, okay. Ain't none of my business if they ain't up to date. All right, again, anybody got any questions? Oh, thanks, sir.
So, so basically, they were obligated to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand. They paid the twenty-five thousand, but the hundred thousand instead of paying it to the W C, uh, W C D A, they paid it to the county.
Correct.
And so uh, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
To basically get Julie to get the books to finally wash out, what has happened here is we got these outstanding invoices for a hundred thousand dollars to the City of Goldsboro on this one. Um, show that as the contribution.
So they've actually paid it, but they just paid it to the wrong people?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Hmm, thanks, sir. That all answered?
That's all of the budget amendments, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, going on to motion to approve amendment to the Wayne County Budget Amendment Policy.
Uh, currently, the budget amendment policy requires any changes to budgetary lines over five thousand.
Excluding reappropriations to be brought before the Board of Commissioners for approval. I would like to request a change in the budget amendment policy that budget amendments for requesting a change in account number only within the same fund and for the same purpose as originally intended be administered via county manager approval. These budget amendments will neither increase nor decrease the current budget, but simply allow for the placement of the transaction to be made in the correct line item for financial processing. This would greatly reduce the number of budget amendments that I have to present to you during the year. Additionally, it will allow for quicker processes of in, invoices. Finally, it would save time on added approvals that had already been given. The requested change is highlighted in the attached policy to the memo.
So basically, what we just went over, a couple of those, we just went over where it was?
No, sir, none of, because they switched funds. So all of these would be required to be brought to you, but previously, but, but if it's within the same fund, same purpose, not changing the budget at all, those would be brought to you. It's strictly to, most of the time is to capitalize it or not capitalize it.
I got you. Anybody got any questions? But it would require the approval of the county manager.
Absolutely. All budget amendments, um.
It just strings line, string lines some of these, eliminate some of these budget amendments.
Anybody got any questions?
I'm good.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next will be motion to adopt a resolution conveying fifteen Hurricane Matthew Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Disaster Recovery Buyout Properties to the City of Goldsboro.
Good morning. Um, this is similar to the action that you took at your last meeting conveying these properties to Seven Springs. Um, again, this is the, um, H M G P Disaster Recovery Program that we administered for the county for Hurricane Matthew. Uh, we administered it for the entire county, including the municipalities. Uh, we have, we acquired fifteen properties within the City of Goldsboro. Um, those have been demolished and are ready to be closed out. Um, so we're ready to, um, transfer those to the City of Goldsboro. This would be pending approval from FEMA. And the City Council has already approved the transfer and agreed to abide by the, uh, uh, the deed restrictions that would be on the conveyance.
What are the deed restrictions?
That it would be.
Permanent open space. Uh, you can never build on the lot again.
Recreational.
There are some recreational uses that you could use it for, but it's basically no, you're never to build a house there.
Put a park on it?
You could put a park on it, yes. Couldn't have a building on the park.
Sir?
Couldn't have a building on the park.
Any questions? All right, on to the next one, uh, motion to approve the sale of surplus property located at one thousand six North Center Street in Goldsboro as requested, requested by the City of Goldsboro.
Yeah, this is a request, um, by the City of Goldsboro to sell this property. It's, um, Christopher Jones made an offer of eight hundred and eighty dollars on the lot. That's half the tax value. Um, and then this is a previous foreclosure. Tax value is one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and all the adjoining property owners have been notified.
Anybody got any questions, concerns? All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to number ten, motion to approve the preliminary plat for Bartlett Road Subdivision. Mr. Berry.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
Bartlett Road Subdivision, this is a preliminary plat, so it is the beginning of the process for subdivision, so nothing is on the ground at this point. Uh, they are proposing ten lots. Uh, as the name says, it is on Bartlett Road right near, um, Antioch Road. The average lot size is sixty-one thousand square feet, which is about one, little less than one and a half acres. Um, the planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Keep pulling the map up.
Yes, sir. Wow, those are large lots.
They are.
Yes. Anybody good?
I'm good.
All right, moving on to number eleven, motion to approve preliminary plat for, uh, Piper Point Subdivision.
All right, Piper Point, this is also a preliminary plat. Uh, this one is out on Nahuna Road. It's the south side of Nahuna Road. If you're familiar with, with Willow Brook Subdivision, it's just west of Willow Brook, but on the south side of Nahuna. Uh, there are forty-nine proposed lots with this subdivision. Uh, the average lot size with this is about thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand square feet. Uh, the planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval as well, and you can see that map, um, with the main entrance coming in off of Nahuna Road, uh, with some cul-de-sacs that kind of, um, split off there on the right side.
What are the smaller lots? Some bigger they?
The smaller lots?
Eighteen.
I'll pull up my larger map here.
Look like fifteen thousand.
Yeah, well, uh, twenty.
Twenty thousand, okay. They just look like night and day compared to that, the one prior to.
I've crocked a back and picked corn in right there. That's joined the land right beside mom and daddy.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who, who, uh, who's doing, who's doing the subdivision?
This one is, uh, the name is Andrew Ross. Not familiar with him.
And that land was sold several years ago, and I sure thought that the Tillmans bought it, but apparently they didn't.
Barry, how many, how many, um, if you had to guesstimate, how many subdivisions would you say the county has moving, moving right now? How many?
Right now, I'd say where there's actually construction going on, I'd say maybe no more than probably six or so. Maybe eight at the most. It, it loo-, it seems like much more because what happens is, like, you'll see, say, this subdivision, for example, and then you'll see, then they'll come in in phases with the final plat, and you'll see, like, a phase one, then it'll come in with a phase two. So really, you, you might see one subdivision four or five times. Uh, and so it, uh, has that appearance that, you know, there's, but in terms of the number of subdivisions themselves, um, that are currently active where there's construction, like I said, I'd probably say maybe half a dozen.
How many lots you say was in this one?
This one is forty-nine.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to number twelve, motion to donate a surplus vehicle to the Goldsboro Bridge Battlefield Association Incorporated to the North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-nine.
Yes, sir. Um, in the past, we had donated a surplus vehicle to them to use in the maintenance of the grounds out there. And that vehicle was involved in a rearing collision on one seventeen recently. And so they asked the county, did we have another vehicle that we could possibly donate? They found one that was suitable, uh, for what their purposes are, hauling trash. And, uh, so we're trying to move that vehicle to them if you would allow it, sir.
Any questions, concerns about it?
The one that had to wreck, whose fault was it?
Somebody else's fault.
Okay.
The truck wasn't, it wasn't much to the truck. The one we're giving them is a two thousand seven Chevy Silverado. It came from Facility Services, I believe.
I'm good.
All right, moving on to number thirteen, motion to approve work authori- authorization number nine for construction administration Phase One and Three and Construction Observation Services for the prim- perimeter fence project funded ninety percent by a portion of the Wayne Executive Jetports Airport Infrastructure Grant Funds with a ten percent county match with appropriate budget amendment.
Yes, sir, this is for sections, uh, Phase One and Three. If you'll look at, there's a map attached. You can see, uh.
Bring that map up, careful you would, and so she, we can see it on.
See what phases this is addressing.
All right.
Phase one is the green.
Back, back, back down just a little bit. Oh, well.
Yeah, that is good.
There you go.
Phase one is the green line, starts up by the T-hangers, goes to the west or to the south, actually, and, uh, goes around the end of the runway.
That's the north, I mean, the south end.
That's south end of the runway, and then Phase Three is that yellow. Part of that line, I believe, is down already.
It is, it is.
I thought it was supposed to include all three phases.
I think that the third one will be coming later, in a later time for approval. This is just Phase One and Three at this time. As estimated by the, our, uh, engineers.
Any questions?
The red lines, is that what the airport or the county owns?
Yes, sir. That's the, uh, boundary of our property.
Any other questions? Hold on just a second here. Again, if you'll look at that, it's got one, two, and three on there, a total of three million dollars.
I'm just going strictly by his memo.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
All right, we'll approve one and three, and if we need to go back to two, we'll, we'll do it later. Any other questions?
By his message.
What is two, the blue line?
Yeah.
When you see his memo, yeah.
The big, the, the biggest thing, I think, was the time constraint.
Is it possible for you to attach the map to, uh, to our agenda document?
It's in there.
It's in there.
The map is in here?
Yes, sir.
I didn't find it. Okay, thank you. Okay, got you. Thank you.
So if you'll look at attachment B, going all the way to the bottom there, it'll show perimeter fence Phase Two, perimeter fence construction Phase One A and One B, and Phase Three, total three point three five five.
So this memo that I have up here, sir, tells you that each phase was bid as separate bid schedules under Work Authorization Number Eight, which also included construction services for Phase Two. Then they broke down, um, Phases One and Three, One A, One B, and Three.
Says the work authorization will cover construction administration services for Phases One A, One B, and Three, and construction observation for the entire project. Is anticipated that construction for Phase One A, One B, and Three will be funded by state grant. Uh, with the work authorization being funded by a portion of G W W's available N P E funding. But I think your memo is right.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Just touch base with him on that, if you will, because we no longer were using N P E funds. Uh, the state came forth and said they would fund the entire project. So just touch base with him. When was that, when was that dated? Uh. Was this memoed before that? I'm not sure, I'm not sure, just. We can check with him. That's dated April twenty-first, actually May twentieth.
Approve what he has here.
Right.
And then I'll ask him.
All right.
Sounds good. All right.
All right, uh, going on to number fourteen, motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two, re- a resolution awarding service weapon to Sergeant Zachary Kenlaw. Uh, number fifteen, motion to approve the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five legislative goals.
Hang on just a second. It's that time of year again, you know, I've sent emails to you about your legislative goals for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And, uh, I put the one of the goals from last year that were, nothing never changed. And, uh, we went out to you and to department heads for any additional, um, objectives and goals, and you want me to go through them, I mean.
I've read through all of them.
I did provide it to you, so I mean, I'm just looking for approval of that so I can forward that to N C A C C.
Some, some of them are the same as they were last year.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I mean, how many, how many new was there?
Uh, it probably doubled. There was probably ten or eleven last year, and then in our planning session back in January, and in our budget work session, you all identified several goals that you wanted added. Also reached out to, um, some department heads, all of our department heads, if they had any legislative issues that needed to be addressed, and uh, we added those as well, just, there was a few of those.
Scroll down just a little bit so I can see them.
Number twelve is the one I'm really pushing for.
That's the one I want to see.
Number twelve is to allow inmates in county jail coverage under Medicaid, Medicare upon incarceration.
Right, there was another one somewhere that Chip mentioned earlier this morning. It on there, Chip.
Number twenty, N C G S statute change for registered leave possession to be appointed by commissioners or county manager.
Okay.
I don't mind going through these if you want me to read them.
No, I'm good. I just, there were just a couple of them I was, and clarification.
There's some very good ones.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Also, going out, point out, lower the student population threshold for state low wealth supplemental fund budget code O thirty-one to a number less than fifteen thousand students. Change the low wealth funding formula to allow for the drop in A D M due to student population pressures from charter, private home and online education opportunities since COVID. Critical one. That's all on that.
All right, so the next would be public comments, county manager report, board commissioners committee reports. We got closed session, Mr. Borden?
Yes, sir.
All right, have a motion going closed session.
Same here.
Just to consult with your lawyers to, uh, attorney, client privilege.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Fire ahead, please. You're having a fall. Thank you for the day. Thank you for your many blessings. We asked that you be with our many women in uniform, especially the ones at Seymour Johnson. We asked that you be with our first responders as they take care of us here at home. Their job is getting more challenging every day and just we asked that you asked that you be with them. And we asked that you be with our nation, dear God. It's uh it's it's not like it used to be. Uh, we just, I don't know what the problem is, but we just wished it or hoped that you can intervene and get us more all on the same page. Because we all, all Americans, doesn't make any difference what what gender, what race, what party affiliation, we're all Americans. And sometimes we don't act like that. And we just ask that you can bring us all together and continue to let America be the strongest country in the nation. Because it it's slipping right now. We asked that you be with the ones that's in the path of the storm. Keep everyone safe and have a minimal damage. We ask this in your name, amen.
Commissioner Doherty has to pledge.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Um, as I've been saying the last several months, if we have an issue, we have to clear the building. From me to my right will go out with me this way. From me to my left will go out with Carol. Chip and I'll sweep the floor. If we have any kind of medical issues, Dave's in the back from EMS and he'll take care of you. He'll be in good hands.
Mr. Chairman, before you go in further, I'd like to say congratulations to Michelle Estrada for her promotion in the county. And we feel quite sure that you're going to do a fantastic job.
Yeah, we were going to do that at the next, at the number three.
Well, I jumped.
And this is chairman I met in the state. That should actually say July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. So I will adjust that in the final minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve the July, I mean June, July sixteenth? Twenty twenty-four minutes?
A move.
Everybody's come up?
Yep.
They passed.
Okay, do I have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Budget amendment number thirty-eight, as we went over in pre-agenda. We also have to add the appointment committee after the special presentations and before consent. Add your appointment committee to that space in our agenda.
After the special presentation is correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we have individual action for the consent agenda.
Individual action for a consent agenda?
Yes.
So what do you mean by individual action for a consent agenda? You talking about each individual one and not have a consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right, I have a motion. I have a motion to
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if we just pull off what items, what item that you want pulled off, sir?
I don't have a problem with that.
Because I have, I have a couple that I want pulled off also for individual actions to make it easier.
Okay, so this, so which ones, Commissioner Williams, which ones do you want taken off?
Item fifteen, please.
Item what?
Fifteen.
Item fifteen.
Like a slated goal.
You want it, so you want it for individual action and new business, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
Item six, seven, and thirteen.
Six, seven, and thirteen. Six, seven, thirteen. Seven and thirteen. All right.
Mr. Chairman, will those be placed under new business?
Yes, ma'am. That will be after what's left of consent agenda.
Do we go for six, seven, thirteen, and fifteen?
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the adjusted consent agenda? Or the adjusted agenda?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, please cast your vote. Mine didn't come up.
How would you like to vote?
Yes, I'm fine with that. All right, so we go on to special presentations. Uh, the first one will be presentation by Mataya Estrada, Wayne County 4-H member and youth delegate to the North Carolina Association County Commissioners Annual Conference. She is also the daughter of Ms. Michelle Estrada. And we all would like to say congratulations. So we, we recognize you before, but we understand that you were busy working, so.
Thank you so much.
So tell you to come up.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. To stand before you today as the Wayne County 4-H County Council President to share with you how 4-H has shaped my life and continues to impact our community. For those unfamiliar with 4-H, it is a youth development organization, part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, that empowers young people through hands-on learning experiences and leadership opportunities. The four H's stand for head, heart, hands, and health, representing our commitment to the youth development. My 4-H journey began with the Decolores Ballet Floco Rico Dance Club. Through this program, I learned traditional Mexican dances and gained confidence, cultural appreciation, and a sense of belonging. 4-H provided me with a platform to showcase my talents, connect with my heritage, and develop public speaking skills. But 4-H is more than just clubs and projects. It's about building life skills, fostering community engagement, and cultivating future leaders. In 4-H, I've learned the value of teamwork, time management, and perseverance. These skills have been invaluable in my academic and personal life. Today, I'm proud to serve as a volunteer and leader, helping grow our organization forward as county council president. I've seen firsthand how 4-H transforms kids like me into confident speakers, nurtures budding scientists, artists, and instills a sense of civic responsibility in our youth. The impact of 4-H extends far beyond individual growth. Our members contribute thousands of volunteer hours annually, addressing local needs and making Wayne County a better place to live. I stand before you not just as an individual success story, but as a representative of the hundreds of youth in our county whose lives are being positively shaped by 4-H. Your continued support of this program is an investment in our future of Wayne County. Thank you for your time. I'm excited to be attending the Youth Voice Conference and hope to see you at the Youth Involvement Breakfast.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like to say that, you know, many, 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 many years ago, I was in 4-H.
I mean.
A long, long time ago. But y'all are so fortunate to have the opportunities now because when I was in 4-H, it was all left up to the individual schools that we went to. And we got, I mean, we'd go to a meeting about once a month and we'd get the sign to put in our yard that we'll remember. But, but that, that was about it. We did, we did not have the opportunity that y'all have got today to really get involved in 4-H. And I just wanted to thank you and the staff out at, at the Maxwell Center for, for what y'all do to promote 4-H in, in Wayne County.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. We know you'll represent us well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation by Dermograph for the NC Freedom Fest.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to brief you on the festival once again. So it seems like we have an annual tradition started here. The festival dates back to 2017 under a different name, but has been operating under NC Freedom Fest now for, this will be our fourth year. So the, the festival is a military and first responders appreciation festival. The initial objective when we designed this was to bring the base and community together in a family-friendly setting in downtown Goldsboro so that we could say a proper thank you to those who serve. Maybe more appropriate right now than ever for us to take that moment and, and thank the people that are in harm's way. Following the 2019 event, we changed the branding, which allowed us to bring in more partners, if you will. So we operate with a motto, it's actually more than a motto, it's become kind of our marching orders of one community. So we have lots and lots of volunteer help, we have nonprofits that are helping, we have county support, city support, base support. And we produce an event that is free to the public, except what you're going to eat and drink. Everything else that you experience that day will be free. With the support of sponsors, and I'll run through a slide that shows some of those. We now have hit an annual operating budget, a cash budget, not just the in-kind donations that exceeds $120,000. So what we're doing is not easy. It requires a lot of participants, a lot of volunteers, and a lot of support, frankly. So the festival itself will take place on September seventh. It will run from two to nine. This year, we're, we're trying to formalize kind of two key elements. So the street fair, which will run from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and that will be on Center Street from Ash to Spruce. In that footprint, you'll see two kids zones this year. We'll have Disney characters, we'll have cowboy mark out teaching roping and rodeo skills. We'll have face painters, fairy hair, car and bike show, craft vendors. We'll have the finalists from the art contest on display. So Wayne County Public Schools and the Arts Council have helped us create an art contest. This is year two. A great way to, to bring the next generation of patriots into the fold. So their artwork right now is on display throughout the public libraries. The day of the event will be on display at the hub. And then later in the day, we'll actually announce the, the grand prize winners. The kids zone, or I'm sorry, the, the street fair will run from two to five. It's our hope at five that we can actually kind of close that piece down, reopen some of the streets, let some of the vendors and static display folks that have been there supporting us head home. We've heard from them in years past that us fencing them in until 9:00 PM really just was not fair. You know, once the, the concert started at 5:00 PM, most of their foot traffic went away. So we're trying to adjust the, the schedule. And of course, we are thrilled to, to know that we'll have an F-15E flyover again. What a great statement that makes to, to kind of kick off the, the concert portion of the event. The one serious moment in the day are the presentation of the Military Appreciation Awards. These are people that have excelled, they have done something extraordinary on base, they've received recognition on base. My objective is to let John Q. Public know all the great things that are going on inside the fence. It's not just the planes in the air, there's a million moving parts. So we draw attention to three award winners each year. We bring them up on stage with the wing commander and with other folks, the, the chairman of the Military Affairs Committee and others so that we can properly recognize them. So this slide, super busy, but it's important because what you see here is support from sixty-three sponsors. Not all of them are just Goldsboro-based or Wayne County-based. So we're excited to see our, our list of sponsors continue to grow. I think I may have mentioned this in the past, but if I haven't, our little festival is an award-winning festival. And not just Wayne County Award-Winning Festival. We've received recognition at the state level from Duke Energy. We've received recognition at the national level from the Elks Organization, two years in a row for the best community event. And from the Department of Defense, the Spirit of Hope Award. Each branch of service is allowed to present one per year. Typically, they go to a military member or somebody famous. And somehow, we managed to get nominated and we made it through all of the edits. And I got to represent our community by traveling to the Pentagon and receiving that award and bringing it back. And that really is a kudos to Wayne County, to Goldsboro, to Seymour Johnson, to all of the people that make this thing happen. It's a demonstration of what, what can happen when we work together for a common objective. This year, we're excited to announce that our headliner is Parmally. For those of you that don't know Parmally, they hail from Parmally, North Carolina, so sixty miles to the northeast of us. They're a nationally recognized touring band, three number ones last year, over a billion with a B, downloads. These guys are red hot. Somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago how we had this overnight success and could bring in Parmally. And I said, well, ironically, our overnight success with Parmally has taken us four years to negotiate. But we're thrilled to bring them. I think they will be a, a, a big draw. And frankly, the more people that we can get there saying thank you to those who serve, the better the event. And I'll share some numbers with you about them a little bit later in, in my closing. We also were thrilled to have the artist who was our headliner in 2021, the first year under Freedom Fest logo, Brooke McBride. She, on her own, would be a legitimate headliner, but she is so excited to be opening for Parmally. It's just hard for her to contain herself right now. So really excited about the lineup.
She can sing too.
I'm sorry?
She can sing.
Yeah, she can sing. Sing. Yeah. So each year, we have undertaken a traditional marketing campaign, so print, radio, billboards, all the things that you would think of that are traditional, including social media. This year, we've added a new element, which is the Friends of Freedom Fest. And if you go on base and you talk to young airmen, what they will tell you is there's so much noise in their email streams that they just swipe left all day long. So the messages that we're trying to send to them, messages that come from base leadership about this, just get caught up in the sweep-left process. So in talking to them, really the way they communicate, the way they prefer to communicate is via text. So we have created a text marketing campaign where we push messages out, just short bursts about the event and the amenities, volunteer opportunities, even though we're doing this to honor them. There is a large part of the population There is a large part of the population at Seymour Johnson that says, "If you expect me to show up, give me a chance to volunteer." So even though this is our thank you party for them, they want to help put it on. It's really cool to see how that campaign has helped engage the base. So a couple of numbers here, and these are very fluid. So these numbers that I'm sharing with you are already out of date. Historically, our social media is something in the thousands in terms of impressions or reaches or whatever the metrics are that you're looking at. From the point, we did a soft announcement of Parmally. We did not beat the drums, we didn't scream from the mountaintop, we did a very quiet introduction of our headliner. The needle moved over 200,000 reaches and over 120,000, I've got it backwards, over 200,000 impressions and over 120,000 reaches. So those are people that are engaging, they're looking at that item that's crossing their feed and then making plans, so we certainly expect to have a record crowd this year. And if we can get this to work, this is a 60-second, I'm not sure that it's going to download a video. It's a 60-second video that shows you the highlights of Freedom Fest. You can check that out on our website, ncfreedomfest.org. As always, we appreciate the support of the county. We can't do this without support from all of the partners. And my objective here today was simply to brief you and to continue telling the story of the festival so we can get as many of you out there as possible.
Thank you, sir. Has anybody got any questions for Doug? Excuse me, Mr. McGrath.
It's Doug.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next on our adjusted agenda is the Appointment Committee. Do you want me to do this?
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, we do have an appointment. Would you like me to continue? This is continuing the formal promotion.
Yes, sir.
We would like to reappoint Chair Coker to renew for the Jetport Association Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir. Have a motion on the floor to reappoint Chair Coker to the Jetport Commission. Please cast your vote. Is that on? Raise your right hand.
No, it's not, since it's an adjustment.
In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Five to one. All right, thank you, sir. All right, do I have a motion to approve the adjusted consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. Would please cast your vote. Mine's not coming up. Raise your right hand, in favor? All opposed? All right. Okay, so now we go to our new business. The first one would be have a motion to approve the budget amendments.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we do these individually, correct? I mean, far as by hand? All in favor of budget amendments, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
Mine came up on the screen.
Oh, did it? So are they going to come up or not come up?
They should, yes.
Oh, they should, okay. Refresh, everybody refresh your stuff already. All right, so number seven, we have a motion to approve amendment to the Wayne County Budget Amendment Policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please, all cast your vote. All right, number 13 on your paper, is motion to approve Work Authorization Number Nine for Construction Administration Phases One and Three in Construction Observation Services for the Perimeter Fence Project, funded 90% by a portion of the Wayne Executive Jetports Airport Infrastructure Grant Funds with a 10% county match with appropriate budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay. All please cast your vote. No, ma'am? Not on mine?
Neither.
Not now.
Nope. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. All right, number 15, a motion to approve the proposed 2024-25 legislative goals. Have a motion to approve the...
Mr. Chairman, I move that, make a motion that we approve the proposed 24-25 legislative goals.
All right, a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Did all go through? All right. All right, so that being completed, our new business, we go to public comments. We got anybody signed up?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. We go to county manager's report?
Don't have a whole lot. I just, we'll be impending weather, we'll be sending out weather updates, so you keep a check on your email for those coming. We're going to the NCAA Conference, but we'll be in constant contact with our officials here in emergency services in case we need to come back sooner than expected. But that's all, you know, just batting down the hatches at home and be prepared.
I'll be here. I'm not going to Winston-Salem.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's see here. Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Or Mr. Friedman? How is it?
Again, with the hurricane, with the storm coming in, we're going to get flooding of some roads, ditches, and so on and so forth. I've had some constituents reach out to me about the county road situation, and I just let them state that the county does not maintain the roads or the ditches. That's the Department of Transportation. So take your complaints there, unfortunately.
And they do have an online tool that they keep up to date with road closures in case that occurs. I hope it doesn't, but in case it does, that is available information.
We can actually have Joe put that on our Facebook and website. Yep.
That's a great idea. Good idea.
And, you know, they are expecting a lot of rain that's going to be, you know, come down at one time, but what's going to affect us the most is when the water from Orange County and Wake County gets down here in the river. I feel like that we're looking at first till next week will actually be worse than the storm coming through.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, I wanted to thank our EMS director and also city councilwoman Brandy Matthews. Dave did a, he did a CPR course within the city of Goldsboro, and it was very educational. I learned a lot. I learned that, you know, things are a lot different now when it comes to doing CPR. When I was younger, we did it with the mouth, and, you know, that was kind of discouraging, you know, trying to save somebody's life. And even Dave pointed out that, you know, a lot of people don't want to put their mouth on someone else's mouth. So, you know, there's ways to do it. I learned that, you know, our county actually has devices that we're willing to put in a lot of locations to help save people. He also educated us on, we're a purple county, which is very bad when it comes to heart and cardiac arrest. So, I mean, I think that we need to educate people more, we need to do CPR more, we need to save lives. And I just thank Dave, you know, for just taking his time and educating our young people. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Daughery?
No comment.
Mr. Aco?
Yes, sir. I had the pleasure Saturday night to go to the Purple Heart banquet. Had a great turnout, great meal. It does drag on a little bit long sometimes. As I told Carol earlier today, when you've got a project that's going on that's run by all men, you might as well get used to it. But anyhow, we had, like I say, we had a great turnout. I don't remember how many Purple Heart recipients was there, but I'm guessing, I'm guessing 25, 30 that were there. Also, they recognized the Gold Star families for the ones that never came home. And again, they put on a real good program. It's Brandy Matthews, the City Pro Tem, read the proclamation from Wayne County and from the city. And then I made a few comments after she read the proclamation and just expressed my appreciation for what those people had sacrificed. And also, I did, you know, let them know that the city and the county have, we support Seymour Johnson, that, you know, this is a community family in far as we're concerned when they're in Wayne County, they're Wayne County citizens, and that, you know, every time a word of the BRAC comes up, we start shuffling and making sure that we do everything we can to keep what we've got at the base and hopefully get more. But Brandy did a great job in reading the proclamation, and it's kind of a tear-jerking ceremony to go to because you see some of these Purple Heart recipients come in, and they recognize all of them that's there, and some of them in wheelchairs, some of them on crutches, and it's, they have sacrificed so much for us to have the freedom that we have today. And I told them that in my comments was that I did not serve in the military, but their sacrifices is what gives me the right and the freedom to be a county commissioner today. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. It's been, already said on a couple occasions, about the storm coming. It does look like it's tracking at the present time toward Raleigh, so we'll be on the right-hand side, but it's not going to be anything that we consider a great wind event, but the rain is probably going to be the biggest issue because it's kind of running at a snail's pace. We will get that information out on our website and Facebook to try to assist in anything, let you know what the road closures are. I want to thank a special person that helped me situation with my daddy here the other week. That person knows who they are. They don't like kudos, but I appreciate it, and meant a lot to me. Next thing is, I had the opportunity, or the honor, I should say, to speak at the Bridge Education for Matthew Fishman. Thank you to Carol and Kayla and Ginger, Joel and Trent, Department of Transportation, for allowing us to name the Country Club Bridge outside of Mount Olive after Matthew Fishman. And this is just a small monument for the county to keep, but as you go, as you drive down 117 bypass toward Mount Olive, you'll see the signs in the north and southbound lanes.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, obviously, I went to that ceremony, and that was a touching ceremony, too. And I don't know how in the world Officer Fishman's dad, which is a minister, can get up and talk like he did about his own son and what the family went through and all, but he's got to be a strong man. But it was a, it was a, it was a tear-jerking ceremony, but then again, it was a very well-deserved ceremony. Thank you.
Well, it's not proper etiquette for you to stand up and, or to turn around when you're in a event like that. I started to say that, but I didn't because if they'd have looked at the back, it was just a sea of county employees from emergency service family along with others, along with a lot of family and community support people there to support the family, so.
I'd also like to appreciate the Southern Maine Country Club for allowing us to use their facility for that presentation.
Absolutely. That was a, that was a life changer because it was mighty hot that day, and they opened up their doors and helped us with that, so. All right, with all that being said, I appreciate it. Y'all be safe, and we will see you at the next meeting. We got, they got closed session, though. Well, we'll see you at the next meeting after closed session. session. All right, motion adjourned. Excuse me, adjourned.